I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council order. I don't know, please call the roll.
Mr. Cost.
Here.
Mr. Fennell. Mr. Fraser.
Here.
Ms. Hall. Mr. Labutus.
Here.
Mr. Lang.
Present.
Mr. Marmy.
Present.
Mr. Raff.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
And Mr. Buck.
Here.
We have eight here this evening. If you please rise for the invocation by Mr. Blake, followed by the pledging allegiance. Just pledge.
May bow our heads. Heavenly Father, center us tonight as we make decisions on the behalf of the people of Newark. We take to you our worries, our concerns. We ask that you give us strength and give us guidance. We ask that you give us the wisdom and the courage to make what's good for the people of Newark. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Please see you. Thank you. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's the time for council to discuss anything pertaining to the agenda tonight. Do we have anything? Mr. Marmy?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to excuse Mr. Fennell and Ms. Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. May I just excuse Mr. Fennell and Ms. Hall as their second?
Second.
All the favor sign by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. They're excused. Thank you, Mr. Marmy.
Also, I just wanted to bring up that I will be asking to reconsider 18-42.
And we'll do that this way. Is that okay with you?
Yes, Mr. President.
Anything else under caucus? I'm sorry. Mr. Fraser?
Mr. President. We just got over with the Economic Development Director. After talking with the law director, we'll hold that legislation for the next council meeting to make sure the language is clean in the ordinance and make sure that any changes or updates are appropriately made.
That was the legislation you talked about in your committee.
1907, yes.
I will also be, if we do bring up 18-42, I will be abstaining from that. So I'll make that comment.
Mr. President.
Mr. Buck?
I will abstain from ordinance 19-07. I'll vote on that this evening.
19-07, did you say?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Buck. Anything else for caucus? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes of our March 4, 2019 meeting? Motion by Mr. Labutus.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fraser. All the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. That passes. Thank you. We have two reports this evening from standing committees. We have one from finance, one from economic development. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We also have two reports from city officials tonight. One from our auditor, Steven Johnson, our operating report for the period ending February 28, 2019, and our city tax administrator, Barb Jobs, our income tax revenue report for the period ending February 28, 2019. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Under communications tonight, we have three. We have two, one from David Clay and one from Jacqueline Whitaker, both discussing the not to have a ban on chickens. That was brought up at the last meeting. There was some discussion about that, not by council but by citizen. Neither one of them are in favor of that. And our other communication is Mayor Hall, who will present a proclamation for developmental disabilities awareness month. Mayor Hall? I'll ask Jason and Mia to join me up here. Jason is the superintendent of our local Lincoln County Board of Developmental Disabilities, and Mia's come along with him. And I guess as a photographer, he used to be with the Advocate and spend some time in here, so good. He just joined me here. Super. Thank you. Whereas Lincoln County has a strong history of supporting people with disabilities as they pursue education, employment, and community connections, people with disabilities have contributed to the city of Newark in immeasurable ways as neighbors, coworkers, students, and friends. They volunteer in our community, advocate for change, and their voices and perspectives shape the identity of the city we live in today. The future of our city is one where all people are able to achieve their goals and live, learn, and work together. As residents of Newark, it's important to build on our history of inclusion and work towards a future free of limits, barriers, and preconceptions that could affect people with disabilities as they pursue what is important to them. The Lincoln County Board of Developmental Disabilities supports people with developmental disabilities and their families, connecting them with the resources that they need to plan for their future. Now, therefore, I, Jeff Hall, mayor of the great city of Newark, do hereby proclaim this month of March 2019 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Newark, Ohio, and encourage our residents to work alongside the Lincoln County Board of Developmental Disabilities to ensure that our community continues to build on our legacy of support as we work together toward a strong future together. So, thank you so much. Good. Very nice. Oh, okay.
I'll get one for Instagram.
Sure.
Can't leave that out.
Techno, one, two, three. Thank you.
Jason, you're welcome to say a few words. Please do.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. You've done a nice job there, ma'am.
Mayor Hall, counsel, just on behalf of the Lincoln County Board of Developmental Disabilities, our staff, people we support, their families, our board members, we greatly appreciate you recognizing March as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Without you, we couldn't be as successful as we are today. I also want to remind you that the E.S. Wyatt Center will be completing its major renovation in April, and then we'll be moving back in the end of May. All of our staff will be under one roof, and we certainly want to invite you. We'll be scheduling a big open house, and we hope that all of you will at least come through. If you've been there before, and we really encourage you to take a look now because we've made a lot of great use of this space. So, thank you very much for that.
And I believe we have a gentleman in United Arab Emirates who's a weightlifter.
Oh, yeah. If you haven't been following the news, we have a Special Olympics powerlifter who is competing, and he's won five gold, where's he at? Four golds so far. So, take a look on, I think Channel 6 did a big story that the Advocate, the Dispatch, were really making a big, you know, it's a big deal for him.
He won out in Seattle, the national, and then got moved on to United Arab Emirates for the world, so we're real proud of that.
Really proud of him.
From Lincoln County. Good. Thank you very much. Thanks again. Thank you, Vera. Next on the agenda tonight, we have comments from citizens. There are two places for comments. One is now, and one is after the legislation. Seeing this crowd, I sense someone is going to have something to say. Again, please be, please be respectful. We'll make sure your opinion's respected. I'll make sure of that. Just make sure you respect everyone's opinion and speak. If you'd like to speak this section, this is not a debate with council. This is just your chance to be heard. If you please raise your hand, and we'll try to figure out some way to get everybody up here when we may. Ma'am, we'll start with you.
Me?
Yes.
My name's Betsy Beckman. I live at 8088 Mount Vernon Road. I would like to thank the city council, the zoning board, and the service director for being so helpful and listening to our opinions about the lot at 20 Cherry Street. I'd also like to thank council president Ellington for recusing himself from this vote due to his connection with the present owner. We hope that you all consider the input of the 83 residents who signed a petition against the rezoning of this lot. We want our neighborhood to remain a quiet place where our kids and grandkids can ride their bikes and we can walk at night. Cherry Street has always been a single family, and we want it to stay that way. We hope that you will consider our input when you make your final vote tonight. Thank you.
So, who else would like to speak? Would you raise your hand again? Anyone else like to speak besides Ms. Carnegie in this first section? Anyone else? Okay.
Daniel Crawford, 163 South Second Street. Guess I'll just start by telling as brief of a story as I can about myself. It's pertinent to the homeless issue. I haven't really talked a lot about it in all of my public speaking that I've done, but once when I was eight years old, and then again when I was 16, me and my family, we were homeless. I remember it was fall of 1993. We stayed out at Claylit Campgrounds, and of course, as a kid, I thought we were just going camping, but our camping trip started to last a lot longer than I thought. And over time, I noticed everyone else who was camping started to leave more and more when we were there. And I would learn later on, it was because, you know, we had to leave the house that we were at because someone pulled a gun out on my mom, and she obviously couldn't abide by that, you know? So, we were in a rough spot, and there were a lot of cases where I remember as a kid during those nights where we actually had to bathe using a jug of water, and it was really cold. And I remember several mornings waking up having to have ticks burned off of us because they would latch on to us as we were sleeping. Later on, a few weeks later, I suppose, we got out of that situation by my mom just deciding because she tried to get a hold of my grandpa, and he was stuck in Missouri because there was a great flood that year, and because he was visiting my aunt. So, she, because it got desperate, my dad had to go back on the road because he's a truck driver, and she broke into my grandpa's house, and we stayed there to get out of the cold. And I remember that. And then when I was 16, we fell on hard times. Again, we were homeless. We lived for about a month in the Budget Inn. Actually, when 9/11 happened, we were living at the Budget Inn. And I bring all this up, obviously, because this is a big part of the reason why I care about the homeless issue, because I've been there. I grew up in, at least in two occasions, in that situation. And I know what it's like to live throughout my life in an issue of desperation, where, you know, your single mother, which my mom, even at that point, although she and my dad weren't separated, yet she effectively was a single mom at that point because she was doing everything she could by herself to, you know, protect us, the lengths that she would go to protect us. And then after we got out of that situation, we were in our own home, she did everything she could to help people, even though we didn't have a lot to give. You know, someone would come to our house, tell us that they didn't have food or what have you, and my mom would, no questions asked, help them out. And that was just, the amazing human being that my mother was helped instill in me a sense of, it's unconditional compassion for others. And that's the type of society I believe we should have at all times. So, this notion to me that it can be illegal for someone to set up camp, you know, somewhere where in an area that's not being used, as long as it's public property, I would assume, that all of a sudden, because it's so offensive to the eye, people are just trying to get out of the cold? I mean, it should not be illegal to just exist if you're not in a home, because you can be without a home for reasons beyond your control. And when my friend, Mrs. Carnegie, and I'll talk more extensively about her in a moment, when she brought up two weeks ago that, about something that was told to her and others who were involved in her organization that she and a friend of ours helped found a little over a year ago, she wasn't coming out to attack our police. She was just passing a message along. And I sat back and listened to that, and I thought, okay, well, she was bringing up an important point. And then, of course, after citizens were done being able to comment, our safety director, who I've never had an opinion of one way or the other, decided to come up and speak and more or less attack Mrs. Carnegie and twist her words on her, claiming that she said, claiming that she was basically attacking our police to try and get 15 minutes of fame, when all she was doing was trying to get answers, trying to seek justice. She was not herself making these accusations. She was passing them along. And it's obvious to me that because Mrs. Carnegie is a candidate for office, that that was the goal, was to hurt her campaign. And that's unfortunate, because when you are an officer of the people, in this case, an appointed officer who's supposed to represent all of us, you're supposed to be nonpartisan. So, nothing in what Mrs. Carnegie said was meant to throw our police officers under the bus. When you clearly listen to what she said, it was obvious that she was not attacking them. And I come here as someone who loves our police officers. I've worked with police officers for the past few years since I started working at Giant Eagle. The Heath Police Department is an amazing group of people, and the Newark Police Department is also an amazing group of people. This officer in the back, who very often nowadays watches over us as we come here, he's one of the nicest people you'll meet. I'm always happy to see his face, always. So, I'm definitely not attacking police officers. My father was a military police officer. My friend, Mrs. Carnegie, her ex-husband, was also in law enforcement. So, attacking police officers would be the last thing she'd want to do. But at the same time that I say that, I want to bring this point up. Criticizing the behavior and actions of police officers is not an attack on police, any more than criticizing our teachers is an attack on all teachers. We can attack, we, not attack, we can criticize our institutions without attacking them, just like government. We can criticize the actions of government without being anti-government. So, when we try to twist someone's words on them, we try to make it seem like criticism is hatred, that is a failure of communication in our society, and this demonization has to stop. Now, let me also bring up something about Mrs. Carnegie. She's a nurse, and from what I understand, a really good one at that, extremely compassionate person, and someone whose mother was a nurse's aide, who wanted to be a nurse. I see a lot of my mother in Jen. And I'll be honest, Jen did not want to run for city council. I spent the better part of the last year begging her to run because I see something in her that I want to see in public representation. So, she is reluctantly doing this. I am dragging her along the way because I want to see her win, because I want to see her represent the people in this room, because I know she will go to great lengths to listen to people, like Mr. Fraser does, and I always compliment him because I think he at least goes to that link to listen to people. We may not always agree, but that is something that I think that everyone should try to aspire to be when they're in public service, is to listen to others. So, with that, and there's a lot more that I want to say, because there's also things from the previous, from the previous committee meeting I'll probably bring up during the next comment for citizen comment. I think, considering that safety director Baum may have just been having a knee-jerk reaction to what was going on at the moment, I think it is incumbent, based upon the office that he serves, and also, when you look at what she was actually talking about, I think he owes the people of Newark an apology and Mrs. Carnegie an apology. And I'll end with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Mrs. Carnegie. Ma'am, you, and there's anyone else besides you in this first section? You and you. Okay. Again, there's another section after the legislation.
I don't even know what to say after that, because that was...
Tell us your name and address. I'll tell them about that.
Okay, we'll start there. Jen Carnegie, 2584 Uplimvia Court, and I'm here tonight again speaking as a co-partner of Newark Homeless Outreach. And I just want to speak quickly tonight because I hope that there are a lot more people here that are working alongside Trish and I in the community to help the homeless people and are working for. So, I just have a couple of quick things. First, I want to address the very unfair comment that was made about me, and if it hurts my campaign, I don't care, because that's not why I'm running. My community activism will not stop based on whether I'm an elected official or not. I'm not somebody who only goes to meetings when it's campaign season. Trish and I and our volunteers are out on that corner every Saturday, whether it's 20 below wind chill or it's 110, and we're sitting under a tent sweating our heinies off. So, I think the comment was very unfair, and I understand that the words I said that were reported to us may have been offensive to people, especially in that line of work, and I apologize if I should not have reported what we were being told, but I just felt we should say exactly what we were being told. And since I was asking or trying to get my 15 minutes of fame, I really only spoke for 11, so I'd like to reclaim at least four minutes of my time if I could.
Okay, you're on.
So, I wanted to call, just clarify some of my comments as well. There were three different camps that were reported destroyed. I'll just use the word destroyed right now. And according to the email that was sent on the 5th from the safety director, he says, quote, "I looked into the allegations made at council last night. No, they are not true. However, NPD was there." First of all, my volunteers and I were told Newark was not there, the police department was absolutely not there, and the city had nothing to do with it. So, we're still very concerned about the lack of transparency. There were three reports. The first report were from people that do not want to be identified because they fear backlash, but we have their names. They were set up behind a Salvation Army on the bike trail. They reported to us, quote, "Box cutters were used on our tents." The second camp was on Webb Street. They told us, quote, "Our tents were bulldozed, and the city and law enforcement were present." And the third camp was on Dayton Road, and we had reports that it was bulldozed around the same time. So, Trish and I went and we canvassed the neighborhood where the people were dozed off of Bolin Court. Those people loved those men. They sent their children over there with food to feed them and their dogs. And the thing that they complained about us was these 25 tires that are left back there, they were left after that camp was dozed. So, these tires have more human rights than those gentlemen and their pets that were staying in their tents, and that's why they're angry. That's Trish and I communicating what these people are saying, and they don't want to come down here, because they're afraid of the backlash. So, finally, I think that Newark Homeless Outreach, we're asking for the city to show some compassion, and we try to give folks a hand up every weekend, and it's hard. They don't have anything. And to take what little pieces of their life they have left, we just think is really inhumane. And we're still requesting that the city provide us a place to set up tents and help these people, count them, and give them services, help them get jobs. Not all these people are criminals, and we would really like to see the homeless stop being criminalized. So, thanks.
Thank you. After some conversation from that evening, I do believe that I heard you say allegedly, and I did go back and listen to the tape, and that is what you said. Just give us your name and address on the record, please.
Patricia Perry, 282 North 21st Street, Newark. I'm co-partner in the Newark Homeless Outreach, as well as Lincoln County Coordinator for Ohio CAN, which is Change Addiction now. So, I wasn't able to come last week. I had talked with the people who gave the story that Jen gave. So, I'm here to confirm that what she said was exactly what they told us. We see people every week, and they're afraid. I mean, they're really afraid of the things that are happening out on the streets right When she came down here, she spoke from her heart, and she just wanted people to understand what we are seeing on a weekly basis. Mr. Lang, he's been down there. He sees it. Jeremy Blake's been down there. They see how many people we see. We're now seeing close to 80 people a week, every week, consistently. And it's people that have jobs, but they don't have nowhere to live. So, as Jen said, we have to start trying to do something as a community. And I know we have some, you know, things going on where we're going to get, you know, we're going to get somebody to look into this. We've got to stop looking into it. We got to do something. We've got to start doing and stop talking about it. So, and then my question too, is who paid for the Parks and Recreation to go out there and bulldoze those sites? Was that taxpayer money? Or, I mean, because we've been communicating with the railroad, and right now, the railroad doesn't know anything about that place being bulldozed or any police report being made to do so. So, who took the initiative? Who made the complaint? They had been there a year, almost a year. So, we waited till the night before it was freezing cold to go and bulldoze them out. We couldn't have waited till Friday, when the weather was better? I mean, granted, the one gentleman had a warrant for child support. He wasn't a murderer. He wasn't a rapist. It was a child support warrant. I mean, and at least he is in somewhere where it's warm, but why did it have to be done in such a cruel manner, you know? So, I have a couple pictures of some campsites that we went and saw a couple Saturdays ago, and I know the young lady who's currently staying, has stayed there. It burnt down because they were trying to sleep, and their heater caught fire. Okay? This is where people are living. Is that the way it should be here in Newark? Is this what our city is about? I'm ashamed that we can't be better than that.
Can you show us the pictures?
This is where people are living. This is where people go and stay. They have to heat with heaters and candles to try to stay warm. And these aren't just people that are drug addicts or whatever people want to think about them. These are people that have jobs, but they just can't make enough money to survive. And for that, I ask the city to please take a stand and help us help them. There's other organizations here tonight that want to help. I mean, it's not just us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I apologize.
Chris Wells, 161 South Sixth Street. Newark, our people build our economy. I come from homelessness. I'm born and raised here in Newark. I'm a returning citizen, recovering addict. I face it all. I know how hard it is for the individuals out there. It's not easy. People are out there that have lost their souls, walking around, no soul. And it's time for Newark to step in and take care of their people, not worrying about streets, bridges, and buildings. Let's worry about the people. The people will build the streets, bridges, and buildings. We get them healthy. With that, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on. There's one other section for comments from citizens after about three pieces or four pieces of legislation. So, we'll move on to ordinances on the first reading, 19-07.
Ordinance 19-07 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff. It's an ordinance to provide for the issuance of $850,000 of bond anticipation notes and anticipation of issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying a portion of the city's cost and a portion of the property owner's cost in anticipation of the levy and collection of special assessments for Horn Hill Road sanitary sewer project improvements and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the first reading of 19-07, but it is an emergency. What does she wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 19-07.
Motion by Mr. Marmy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fraser. Is there any discussion on 19-07? Seeing none, office, call the roll vote.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
And Mr. Buck.
Stay. 19-07 passes 7-0 with one abstentions. Next, we have resolutions on the second reading, 19-13.
Resolution 19-13 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Newark to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Public Safety for an award for fiscal year 2019, 2000, or, excuse me, 2019-2020, funding under the Ohio EMS Training and Equipment Grant Program.
You've heard the second reading of 19-13. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt resolution 19-13.
Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 19-13? Seeing none, office, call the roll vote.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
And Mr. Buck.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
And Mr. Buck.
Yes.
19-13 passes 8-0. Next, on the second reading, we have 19-14.
Resolution 19-14 by Mr. Raff and Mr. Cos. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to enter into a lease agreement with selective site consultants regarding land at the City of Newark service complex.
You've heard the second reading of 19-14. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff.
Put big a motion to adopt 19-14.
Motion by Mr. Raff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 19-14? Seeing none, office call the roll vote.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
And Mr. Buck.
Yes.
19-14 passes 8-0. Next, we move on to resolutions on the first reading, 19-15.
16.
16.
Resolution 19-16 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cos, Mr. Raff. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Newark to prepare and submit applications to the Department of Homeland Security for fiscal year 2019 Fire Act grant programs in support of training programs, equipment purchases, funding for personnel, fire prevention, and fire safety programs throughout the city.
19-16 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And finally tonight, we have 19-17.
Resolution 19-17 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cos, Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
19-17.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution 19-17.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. We need to activate this in order to secure these funds in order to move forward with this project.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Motion to waive the two-day reading rule, not debated. Office call the roll.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
And Mr. Buck.
Yes.
Two-day reading rule to waive. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt resolution 19-17.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lang. Is there any discussion on 19-17? Seeing none, office call the roll vote.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
And Mr. Buck.
Yes.
19-17 passes 8-0. And that concludes our legislation this evening. Next on the agenda, one more time, we have comments from citizens. Again, the same rules apply. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand so I can get some kind of an order. Who else would like to speak? One, two, three, four.
Looks like a few more after me. Nancy Waylu, 7441 Stewart Road, Newark, Ohio. We have a crowd here tonight to talk about the homeless situation. I watched the last city council video several times, and the more I watched it, the more distressed it made me. As Ms. Carnegie stated at council two weeks ago, "We have a homeless crisis, and we need to come together to solve it." I don't believe Ms. Carnegie ever accused the police of anything like Mr. Ellington She was relaying what was being told to her by the homeless population, that the Newark outlet outreach home, her group, services, that's a lot of words, services every week. She also stated if the city did have a hand in it, could they please give people time to get their belongings together and move them, which is pretty compassionate when you think about it. I guess what just appalled me was the safety director's reaction. I don't know him. I've never met him. But to get up and be so outraged that a citizen, who is the co-founder of the homeless outreach group, and to state that Mr., well, basically, he said, quote, "Idiotic accusations." A senior member of the mayor's team using language like that, I just, I just find it I don't think the outreach program does what they do every Saturday for fame and fortune. In fact, they probably pay a lot out of their own pockets for what they do. Being out there on the streets like they are every week is hard emotional work. It makes me emotional just listening to them. But it's also rewarding work, knowing you're empathizing with fellow human beings and helping them. There's other grassroots groups that are also helping. The Think Tank on Poverty, Vertical 196, Crossroads Crusaders, and others have come about, do because they see the need that's not being met for various reasons. I'm just not blaming the city. There's various layers. It's never just one entity. They're helping people to survive every week. I've been out there a few times. I've served people food, and it's overwhelming for me. If you walk away and you don't feel just this overwhelming need to help, I mean, I don't know what to tell you. With the lack of transportation in the area, access to shelter, and programs for mental health and addiction, what we're, what we're doing, what these grassroots groups are doing is a Band-Aid. I'm outraged that the way homelessness is looked at in this city and the country. This poster, I made this poster for the Women's March this past January. This was taken in January, a few weeks before. I don't know if you can tell, it's a person boggled up, sitting in front of the county building on a cold January day. And I was marching for housing. We don't have adequate housing for the homeless. St. Vincent, you know, I volunteered for six and a half years there. We had overflow every night. It was a 28-bed shelter, and we had guys sleeping in chairs, in cots. Salvation Army, I'm sure they don't have, you know, we just need more adequate housing. Recently, I read an article that was titled "Aging onto the Street." It stated in the article that nearly half of older homeless people fell into trouble after the age of 50. I believe the men who were out on bowling court, whose campsite was bulldozed, were over 50. I've also been told that the men out there had dogs. I think as a society, we have biases when we see people that are homeless and they have a dog. We often wonder, why do you have a dog? You can't take care of yourself, you know? I had a brother who, after the age of 50, became homeless, and he had two dogs. And I didn't understand it either until I realized why he had them. For homeless people, dogs and other pets offer protection and companionship and unconditional love. They're considered family, and believe it or not, they're cared for really well. Unfortunately, we don't have shelters and housing for the homeless that have pets. I see this as two issues. We have a homeless crisis is the first issue, and the second is how the city reacts to it. Do we react by doing destructive homeless sweeps, or do we show compassion and empathy? I also was reading where it takes three things, I've done a lot of reading the last couple weeks, where it takes three things for a community to end homelessness: political will, supportive policies, and money. Always got to have the money, as we know. While reading about homelessness, I also came across a website titled "Funders Together to End Homelessness." It's a website that lists public-private partnerships, which we hear all the time about public-private partnerships, that are taking place all across the United States to help solve the homeless crisis. It's a wonderful website, and it lists each state and what's going on in those states with public-private partnerships. At the last city council meeting, when members spoke at the end of the evening, not one city council member stated they would investigate what Ms. Carnegie reported. In fact, one city council member thanked the safety director, and another misstated what Ms. Carnegie had testified. That council member also stated he would be very surprised if the city had bulldozed the homeless camp. Well, since then, a police report has now surfaced, and the city was in fact involved. We know that. I have very much respect for our first responders and for all of you, our elected officials. You're doing hard work for, for the people. I know that. I know it's hard work. It's hard probably to listen to people like me get up and say things. I get that. I mean, it's not personal for me. It isn't. I'm a board member of this Freedom School in Licking County, and part of our mission is to provide a way for the community to come together, to talk, learn, reflect, and act. We've been doing this work for several years, and I would ask the city to do the same. I trust that you can develop an approach to Newark's homeless crisis that is thoughtful, compassionate, and effective, and that preserves the dignity of the homeless people. I ask you tonight, how will Newark respond? Thank you.
My name is Bill Hammond. I live at 1215 Mount Vernon Road. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you. Well, I, I guess I want to just voice my feelings about how I feel about the homeless. Every night, most nights when I go to bed, I always, I always think about the people that have no bed or that have no, have trouble staying warm even in the house, and I have a heater, and I, I always think about it, especially if it's a cold night or a rainy night. I always wonder, how can anyone sleep out in the cold like that? My body would not generate enough, I don't care how many clothes I put on, I would, I would, I don't think I'd make it. I don't think I'd survive. I'm not too sure I'd want to. I also think that those people that are homeless could very well be my brother, one of my sons. So it could be someone really close to us. And if I think it was one of our family members, we wouldn't, we just wouldn't let this happen. There is a lot of reasons why people are homeless. Some people don't want to go into a homeless shelter because they don't want to be around other people. There's all kinds of reasons. And I think the homeless shelters, I've worked in the homeless shelter, and we have rules that you must abide by to be able to stay there. I mean, you, you can't be, they do drug tests. We have criteria, and I'm not too sure, felony, child molester. There's a lot of reasons why that these people are slipping through the cracks, that there's no, you know. So I can understand why, I know people say, well, why don't they go to the home shelter? Well, what homeless shelter will put up with them or let them in there? Mental illness, that's another thing. Just, I don't think this is a problem that we can't take care of. If we really wanted to do it, don't we have some vacant land, vacant homes, someplace that they could pitch a tent without being worried about being run off? I guess the question is, where are, where would these people be welcome? Is there anywhere? Where could they go? If they, if you move them from this site to that, where do they, where do they go? Where would they go that they're welcome? So there must, has to be someplace that is possible for, for, for example, my, is it against the law, if I'm a private owner, I've got, I just bought a house recently on the east side? If I want to let the homeless come to my, I got a medium-sized yard, and it's not a big yard, but it's pretty good, let them pitch tents there. On a cold night, the house needs work done, and I'm in, I just recently purchased it. I will bring it back. I will repair it. But in the meantime, if I let them stay at my, my place, would I be in trouble with the law in Newark? Would I be permitted to do that? I'm a property owner. I'm not going to complain. I'm going to let them come there and stay. But what about my neighbors if they don't want them? Will that be a problem? Probably will. So is there any way? There is a way. I mean, a council can, we can find a way. We can find a vacant lot. We can find a house. We can find a place for these people. I've heard that the other cities, a lot of the other cities have these places. Even, I've heard vacant cars, a car is better, an old car, an old van is better to sleep in than a tent. I mean, there's a lot of options. We can find a way to, when we have a storm and we, our houses are destroyed, we open up the schools. We open up, it's an emergency. So we don't sleep, we don't have to worry about sleeping on the street. We can't do that. My house gets destroyed in a storm, enough of, we'll go to the school, we'll go someplace. So this, that would be an emergency for us. Well, these people are in that emergency every night, and we're not doing anything about it. Now, I want to finish this off. I'm living about 10 years past my time. I should, an ordinary person, if I dies 10 years before, I'm still here. And I, I feel like I'm on borrowed time. And I'll tell you, one thing I take really serious, and I always have. Matthew 25 talks about the last judgment. The way we're going to be judged is the way we treat each other, the way we love one another. And we're told, and you can take it literally, and we don't even have an option, whatever we did or didn't do for our, at least the brothers and sisters on the street, he says, "You might as well have done that for me." And I take that seriously. And I, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you. We have three over here. One of you three, you want to stand up? Come on up. We'll do you, and then the young lady, and then you.
I'm Jeff Perry. I live in Heath, 16 Carstairs. I pass to the church across the street from Salvation Army at 261 East Main Street. I've been in Newark 14 years, and I just do what I can, and I went through them when they renovated. There's, we always have people in an overflow. We do a community breakfast. There's, there's only so much you can do as a church, but I have to say, people, look at all these people, and none of us have gotten together. Until I buried Jason's grandmother, I didn't know there were organizations around here. I just took off. Ever many people I could take care of, and I asked the people in my congregation to help. And now I find out there's organizations all over Newark. It's not just your guys' fault. It's our fault. But you need to help us organize and give us a plug. But you need to help us organize and give us a place, tell us we have permission. If we want them to sleep, they sleep in our basement. There were a couple other pastors that talked to me about it, but hey, it was sub-zero. I got a phone call, and I said, well, I'll talk to my trustees later, but I'll just see what we can do. And we had them in there. I also loaned my building to the probation officers for their training this year. It just so happened to be the same time that the people were getting warm. And a lot of those people were afraid, and I said, you don't have to worry about it. I talked to them, I told them, you're here. They weren't there for that reason, to chase anybody down. I think there's a lot of fear and a lot of garbage that goes on in the grapevine, but you know how you kill the grapevine? You guys take control of it. Appoint somebody to be in charge, somebody to take control to say, look, if you want to do an organization like this, you might not want to register with the city, but you're begging them to help. So if we all had somebody that would take it upon themselves, that we would all register with, we could get together and do one hell of a lot more than what you guys can do sitting there. Because our hearts are in the help of the people. You've got to worry about the city of Newark. We do what we can, we've got Narcotics Anonymous meets twice a week, the regional office is in our building. And to be here 14 years and just now find out there's this many people that really care as much as we do? Somebody's got to step up to the plate and take control. I was a vocational teacher. I sat and listened to some of the stuff. Vocational schools are begging for places to rehab, to teach kids how they can work for the rest of their lives. Give one of those rundown houses to the vocational school. Let the carpentry and the plumbing and all those classes rehab it and give it right back to you to do with whatever you want. I was a vocational teacher, and that's what we did. There's so many things that if you just get together and allow people to do what they need to do. And again, I say, I wouldn't have been part of a warming station or anything had his grandmother not died. I would have just done what I could for the two or three that I, I try to work with two or three at a time because I can do more for them with their substance abuses. My background varies. I was a substance abuse counselor. I worked at Mary Haven in Columbus as an intake counselor. I know these people. When I talk to them, I can separate, my wife doesn't even understand, I separate the bullshit. I'm a pastor, but there's, I still got my low antennas, I raised five kids. They start talking to me, I can tell what I need to listen to and what I need to ignore because I want to help them with their real problems, not their made-up stuff. That's all I got to say. I can't tell you enough, I'm amazed. 14 years here, and I didn't even know there was this big of a possibility. I look at it as a possibility. Hopefully, one of you will take it under yourselves and say, it is a possibility. You'll find somebody that'll step up to the plate, organize it, and then we'll take care of the people when they get dozed, they're not going to be dozed away, they'll be dozed to something.
Thank you.
Thanks. You have to excuse me, I just got dismissed from the hospital in Columbus, so I wasn't prepared. My name's Trista Drew, I'm at 84 West 5th Street. I work with several counties with the homeless. I go into the tent cities, I feed them twice a week, and I take lunches to them the days that I don't show up. We have a lot of veterans also. I get help from AMVets in Thornport, Thornville with food, clothing, housing. People donate their leftover yard sales to me, so I just don't work with the homeless. I work with battered women, pregnant teenagers, when they get apartments and places. I help furnish them. With this homeless situation, I didn't get out and around to meet these people. When they had the warming shelter, I seen that they needed food. A lot of my tent city people were in their tents, so I took the food down to them, and that's how I got to meet these fine people. I'm working on trying to get grants to help this out. I'm working on trying to get grants to get a school or an old church. If you all have an old school, rundown, old church, there's enough people from the churches around here that's all pulled together, that would fix it up, that would be a perfect place. Y'all could sell it to us for a dollar. Let us take it over, work on it, get people in it, mainly the schools. They have gymnasiums, they have showers, things. We have enough people that are willing to help, donate their time, and we have enough people and nurses and even some doctors that would help us work with them, help them get on their feet. I have a psychiatrist be more than willing to come in and help some of my veterans that are mental, they're still fighting a war, they won't come into the shelters and stuff, they don't want to hurt anybody. So this is what I'm working with. And I hear all these people talking, they want to help. You know, if you all could look around, there was schools out in the counties that they don't use no more that are rundown. You guys sell it to all of us for a buck, we can get it up running. The homeless people don't want to look at here in Newark, we can get them in a place. We can get a bus, we can get them into jobs, we can get them to school, and some of them don't have educations. We have teachers that's willing to donate time. But if you guys could look around, find something like that. And if you want to know what I'm about, I have pamphlets, I make them myself, they're not good, but they're here if anybody'd like to see what I do.
Is your name and number on that?
Yes. But you're more, you know, contact me at any time, or if anybody needs any help, contact me, I help anyway. Thank you.
Stephen Smith, 237 Violet Court, Newark. Many people have talked tonight on the homeless issue that are much more eloquent on it and are much more closely involved with it than I am. I want to, I guess, just state my support for them and comment that tonight in committee meetings, we heard a proposal to paint the water towers and stand pipes for a cost of, I think it was $150,000, because that would save us in the future an investment of over $1 million if that were to deteriorate and need to be replaced. Can't we, as a compassionate city, provide some cost and investment to support some of these people? Give them a leg up to make them healthy, supportive, productive members of our city?
Mr. Green's coming up. Who else would like to speak? A gentleman back here in the hat, anyone else?
Sir.
Two, okay. Daniel, you're speaking again, or you're done?
David Green, 1791 Olympic Court in Newark. I think, I want to say, I think the testimony that people gave is powerful. I'm glad that Everett McKee is recording this so that other people can hear it. I also wanted to be sure that people saw Nancy Walew's sign. I know the council saw it, but it's a picture of a homeless person at the county building and talking about housing being a right, not a privilege. One of the things I think that I've heard in my life a lot of times is, I never thought this would happen to me. And I know some of you probably have said that, council members as well as people here, whether we've lost people, whether we've been sick, whether we've been laid off, or whether we've been mistreated somewhere along the way, or whether we've been become deathly ill. I've had a lot of issues with this myself along the way. And so you may have said this too, and I think it's an important thing to keep in mind. And it has to do with how we look at this problem, and a lot of people have spoke very well about this. The issue of homelessness, though, is not an individual issue. It's not looking at people one at a time and saying, that person is weak this way, and this person is weak this way, and that's why they're out on the street. There are big things that are going on here that we need to kind of keep our eye on, and they affect the issue. I think Jen Carnegie spoke very well about three homeless encampments, not just one, and I'm sure there are others, as somebody who just spoke could testify. And that's the result of something else going on, I think you have to look at. Even though there's greater, maybe a slight increases in the number of people actually employed, the level of employment for people is really low. Low wages, part-time jobs, temporary, transitional work. So people often have to pace together two or three jobs just to live or keep a family together. And I know what that's about. So there is stuff going on. If you go to eviction court in Licking County, and I hope you do, not because it's such an exciting place to be, but because you hear people testify, many of them, a large number of them are working, but they can't afford rents, or one emergency takes place in their life and they're thrown in the street, and they don't know where they're going to go. Some of them are crying, some are furious, angry about what's going on. And I don't think we're addressing this problem seriously by looking at the causes of what's happening. Instead, we look at an individual and we say, well, you must be sort of a criminal if you're homeless, or you must be deficient in some way. And we're not looking at people as though they have the potential to really affect the society, to really be involved. I want to thank you all for being here. Lots of people participated and were interested, and people spoke very well. These problems are not just Newark's problems, they're Licking County, they're national And so there are also, if you pay attention to the statistics, there are fewer and fewer homeowners and more and more renters. And in Newark, that's true, in terms of the number of rentals are increasing. And the question is, what position does that put us in? It's not a step up. You know, they kind of try and reframe this and say, well, the American dream was, everybody has a home of your own? Well, yeah, that's true, that was the American dream, but there's some holes in that. There's some holes in what's going on right now. If greater number of people are having to rent, it's not just an adaptation, it's the fact that they're being forced into a situation where they have to rent. But there are people who are standing up, some of them have testified very well. There's an article recently by Associated Press, was in The Dispatch, talks about courts back homeless on the streets. This is a funny kind of position to be in. But on the one hand, to advocate that homeless people have a right, human beings have a right to be out on the street if they have to be there. But on the other side of this is, why are we dealing with this? Don't we have enough resources and conditions that we could house people? Just read this quote quickly. Judge Marcia Burson wrote that, in essence, the Eighth Amendment does three things, this is the U.S. Constitution. It limits the type of punishment the government can impose. It prohibits punishments that are grossly disproportionate to the severity of the crime, and it limits what the government can criminalize. And I would say, I think Daniel spoke about the criminalization of people who are homeless. And it's very important, I think, to deal with this because it could be us, maybe it has been us, but it could be us all along the way. So there's a lot of solutions that come up in this kind of discussion, but attacking individuals is not a solution. But I think one of the things I want to do, I want to take a minute here, and I know the mayor issued a proclamation for developmental disabilities today, and I really support that. But I want to issue a proclamation, or encourage us to issue a proclamation, to recognize Jen Carnegie and Patricia Perry for the excellent work they've been doing in trying to involve people who are victims of the actual situation that they're in. And so, to your credit, I want to make a different kind of proclamation and get your support for it. Thank you.
Sir? And then ma'am?
Yes, sir.
And then Daniel, that's it, right? Anybody else? Just your last shot. One more?
My name is Alan Schwartz. I live in Madison Township, but I teach here in Newark and I work with the demographic that we're talking about. I'm going to close on a house tomorrow on the south side. It's a rental, five men are living there. I'm going to close on it for $50,000, I'm going to put $40,000 into it, and I'm going to flip it for $120,000. Hopefully, the people that you all and the development folks have been trying to entice out of Columbus will come and buy my house. And what will happen to those five men over there? They'll be homeless. There already is a housing shortage, right? They'll be homeless. These are the market forces that only government, y'all, can deal with, right? We need to figure out some way to deal with it. Would they actually talk about development slash gentrification in Columbus, but we're too afraid to have a conversation about gentrification? So I'm going to do this, I'm going to contribute to the homeless problem, and no one will do anything. Irene Kennedy and I met with a consultant who works with our developers, who were creating the beautiful downtown and beyond, and he said this, and I quote, he said, Alan, we're going to have beautiful neighborhoods, we're going to have sidewalks, we're going to have playgrounds, we're going to have streetlights, that's the first thing. Second thing is, the people you're worried about are going to have a place to live. I said, sir, is this the same neighborhood? He said, no. Don't ask me to mess with market forces. This is a situation where we're creating more homeless. That's the plan. It's development, and it looks good in the fancy magazines that we're putting out to try to get people to move to Newark so we can justify the rents on the second floor around the square, and it looks good. I look like a smart businessman, I'm going to score 30,000 bucks like that. It's good business. But it creates homelessness, and only you have the power to deal with that situation with rent control, any of a number of well-known strategies which they're using right there in Columbus. But we can't do this unless we're brave enough to have a discussion about gentrification, which is just the other side of the moon from development. Jerry McClain's not brave enough, Dandelotter is not brave enough, Fred Ernst is not brave enough, and y'all are not brave enough to create a community discussion about this. We'll create a community discussion in a second about how beautiful the downtown looks like, and thank you for doing that, but it's much more complex than that. There are things that are being done all over the country, but we are not brave enough to look all over the country to find examples of how to deal with gentrification. We are not even brave enough to use the word. There's been a number of us, including Irene Kennedy, who've been calling for this discussion for three years, and y'all are not brave enough to make it happen. So I challenge you, I'm challenging your bravery. Not only to have the discussion about gentrification, and we can talk about development at the same time, it's a two-edged sword, it's got both edges. Happy to have a conversation about it, lots of people would like to have a conversation about it, but you got to be brave. So I want to talk about one other thing that's happening, if we're brave enough to look outside of Newark. And this is not a solution to the homeless problem. It's not a solution to the lack of affordable housing in Newark. It's not a solution to wages that don't pay the rent. It's not a solution to all that. It's not a solution to what I'm going to do to five people tomorrow when I kick them out of their homes. But I happen, my son lives in Portland, and in Portland, they have this problem many times over, it's a much bigger city, and they- And they created, they didn't bulldoze, they created homeless camps as a temporary solution. Places owned by the city, which were then supervised. There was water brought in. There were toilet facilities brought in. There were garbage cans brought in. People felt safe. They had community, and they lived there. And that is something we could do tomorrow at very low cost. We bulldoze three homeless camps, let's create another one. One that is good for the community, that follows the rules of civilized society. I know you all are worried about that, right? Be sanitary. It'd be good for the people who need to live there until we can find a real solution. But that real solution won't work if the development that we're doing in this city is simply going to create more homeless people. So I challenge you to have that discussion with the community about development slash gentrification. Can you all say that word? Are you brave enough to say it? Gentrification? And I challenge you to look outside the city of Newark to where they're dealing with the same problem. In Columbus, you can hear it every day on National Public Radio, on Columbus, they talk about gentrification. They use the word. They have city officials whose job is to try to ameliorate the situation in Franklinton and on the west side of Newark, of Columbus. Bring them in to the conversation, our community conversation about gentrification. Bring them in. They're very welcome. So, I'm challenging you to look outside the city of Newark and to have a real conversation about the development that's going on in our city. Thank you.
Let me ask you one thing. Just out of curiosity. So, you're gonna buy this house. Why wouldn't you buy this house, fix it up reasonably, and rent it to these five guys? Why aren't you part of this problem?
Market forces. I can make a lot more money. I'm a good businessman. Right? And I just want to add, none of that is true.
I'm trying to. I don't want to turn my back to anyone. Mine is Beth Blunt, spoke early, 33 Summit Street. First, I'd like to thank you all for listening. Okay? And thank you all for coming. It's a big deal. You know, I'm looking around the room, and there's so much wisdom and insight. And the amazing thing is, is that we're all here together. And I was thinking earlier about the word opportunity, and if you break that word down, op, op, opposition or problem, port is door, and then unity. So there's a problem that's become an open door for us to come together. This is a wonderful thing, all right? And I just, again, I want to thank you all for listening, because you guys have solutions that I don't know anything about. I mean, some of you are banking experts. Some of you are know, you know, the ins and outs of zoning, legalese, that I, you know, at my point, I don't quite understand yet. But, and some of you, Ms. Perry, you all, you have your portion of homelessness that we attend to. I represent the Licking County Champions Network and Licking County Community in Action, and we meet at the Vertical on Wednesdays at 6:30. And our portion is to deal with transformation and thinking. And I know there's so many concepts and so many ideas right now that are floating. It's all kind of nebulous. But if you bring it down to the person, this is where we're all coming together. All of us have met at least one homeless person, and that has become our opportunity, that one person. And so, I'm wondering if maybe, Chris Gargis is my partner. Some of y'all know Chris. Chris is fantastic. You know, he's engaging with homeless people and drug addicted and folks who are dealing with mental illness and dysfunction. You know, we've been working to bring, to bring the wisdom and the, how do I say, the treasure of this area together to fight this problem. Because this is no accident that all of you are here at this time and at this moment. So I'm wondering, if you have availability to come Wednesday night at the Vertical, I haven't talked to Chris about it, but I'm sure he wouldn't mind. If you would be willing to come at 6 o'clock, and we could chat some more to see how we might partner with one another. And folks, if you have availability, please come. Please come, because we do need to work together. I was thinking, as the gentleman was speaking, you know, if, I don't know, if anyone, if you've seen the workings of a Rolex, you take the backs off of it, and they're, the gears are very complex. But if they don't work together, it doesn't work. Okay? And this is where we are. This is where we are. And this is a wonderful opportunity for us to come together, to see the transformation of this area. It's gonna happen. It's gonna happen. Thank you all, thank you.
Daniel? If you're already spoken on, I'm gonna give you a short opportunity to wrap it up.
Daniel Carper, 163 South Second Street, as if no one knows that by now. First, I mentioned earlier that I had some concerns about the development that was being discussed earlier regarding the tax abatement. That is literally around the area of my neighborhood, so I'm gonna be keeping a close eye on that. I have a, well, I don't really know if it's radical, point of view regarding tax abatements where I don't think like the Walmarts and the Amazons and the Googles of the world need them. If you're a multi-billion, multinational corporation, there's no reason why you should not be paying taxes at all. But if you're a small business, I believe there's some justification for tax abatement. And of course, definitely if you're a resident who's living in a distressed area. And I would argue that the overwhelming majority of the city of Newark is in a distressed area. So, I would be definitely supportive of seeing at least some kind of temporary tax abatement for the people of Newark as they try to, as we try to rebuild this entire community. But I'm very concerned, though, regarding that issue, because, once again, back to the homelessness issue. And this is one of the unfortunate things about, earlier during the committee meeting, there was a gentleman who spoke up, and he was told more or less that his comments weren't relevant. But it's very much relevant if the development leads to more homeless, as Mr. Schwartz was just talking about. So, that's something we need to keep in mind, is that we need to always keep what's in the best interest of the community. And there's, of course, a lady who spoke earlier about this measure that's gonna be brought back to life today regarding rezoning. And I'm also strongly of the opinion, if there's a zoning measure, if the overwhelming majority of, there's like unity of the entire community against a certain development, should listen to the people of that neighborhood. So I think that their voice should trump the will of any one developer. And of course, the only way that that should be trumped is if it's in the best interest of the people of Newark overall. And I don't think that this particular development would be something that would, should trump the interests of an entire neighborhood, sign a petition and opposition. But anyways, to wrap up, I think, wholeheartedly, I believe within everything in me that we can do better than what we've been doing. I believe that we are capable of being more compassionate. It's the only reason why I'm running now for council, it's the only reason why I've ran for office before. And I by no means am someone who's not ambitious. I've been interested in politics for a long time, so I've had very high dreams since I was very young about that. But right now, in this moment, it is my goal to do everything I can to serve this community, because at the end of the day, as a father of two kids, a single father of two kids, it is the best way I can be their father, is to make sure that the city, the community I leave behind for them is better than what I inherited. So, with that, thank you.
Do you want to introduce?
She raised her hand.
Oh, she had her hand up. I'm sorry, I missed you.
That's okay.
You almost got cut off.
Hi, my name is Tina Perry. My husband's the pastor that was just up here. Don't hold that against me. But I just want to let you know that I represent God's people. And I have been called by God, I truly believe this, to serve these people. I'm about to retire with 32 years of services at Columbus State Community College, where I'm a professor. And I'm gonna be retiring at the end of this semester. And I thought I was gonna be able to do a lot of traveling, which I will be doing. But I also believe that God has called us, Jeff and I, and our church, and the people of the church, to serve these people that are homeless. The one thing that I did not hear mentioned tonight, and I've heard mentioned, is about these children who are homeless. I believe there's a large number of children who are homeless. We don't see them at our church, but they're out there. Where are they, and what's happening? The school system says there are many children who are homeless. I believe the Freedom School even is addressing about that. What are we doing about these children living on the streets? They're in school, they're hungry, but they have no home to go to. I think that's something that we need to address. The other thing, I'm gonna close, because I know you guys are ready to get out of here, I'd like to invite you all to church. Everybody, to come to church. We're at Faith United Methodist. We have a breakfast at 10 o'clock. We have a lot of homeless people that come in there for breakfast. It is one of the best breakfasts in town. You can't beat it anywhere. If you would like to come in and meet some of these people, they're there on Sunday morning. They all come for breakfast. We would love to have you come. But please be our pastor and my guest. You can even sit in the front row.
It's always up there.
We invite you to come and sit in the front row with us. And, you know, we would love to have you. I thank you for your time. I, along with the pastor, say, church starts at 10:45, breakfast is at 10:00. So please come. And...
It's 10:30.
Excuse me, 10:30. I'm downstairs.
She's nailed.
Well, I'm always downstairs working, so I'm so sorry. It's 10:30. Be there at 10:00 for breakfast. And if we need your help, we can have you come in the kitchen and help, or clean up as well. But I really want to thank you for helping us. And I think what I've heard tonight is that, we're here, we'll help. I'm getting ready to retire. You know we're at Faith United Methodist. If you want to come down there and say, "Hey, you said you would help. We remember only you and your address. Come and get us," because it sounds like there are so many people that we can do this. It's a problem that these people come to us every week, the same story every single week. We're hungry, we need a place, we need this, we need that. There's only so much I think that we could do, but I think with your help, we can do so much more for this community. And I just thank you for your time. Please don't, it's 10:30. 10:30. Come and visit us.
Does anyone actually sit in the front row of church? I'm not sure. Turn around from the administration, I'd like to speak. Law Director Sassen.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll pass.
Thank you, Law Director, Mayor Hall.
I will pass this evening, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Cost.
Yes, sir.
You're first.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. This is a great opportunity for all of you to be heard, it's a great opportunity for us to be able to listen, to hear that there are people that want to help, are willing to help. Sometimes you feel like there aren't good answers. But with this many people, I think there's, there are answers if we're all willing to work at it. Thank you all for coming. I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Cost. Mr. Frazier?
Yeah. Actually, now, I want to thank you all for coming, and not only your compassion, but your dedication to the subject, and your willingness to come in and speak openly and honestly about it. So, with all the dates that were thrown out there, let's talk about the next things to do. So, on 3/20, Vertical 196. On the 27th of March, I'll be volunteering with the Newark NAS and their outreach program. And on the 30th, I'm gonna stop by Buna Vista as well, to see what that program looks like. And so, at the end of the day, what it seems to me that we need is a better coordination of the individual needs of people. So with Mental Health America, the Salvation Army, Satan Vincent, closed closets, food pantries, free meals, how do we better communicate and inform people of the services that are currently available and provide for their immediate and individual needs? The second piece is providing health, recovery, and job opportunities for people to transition them to a more sustainable life. The next piece is temporary housing to get them out of the tents and then do something more permanent. And the last piece is permanent housing. And so, when it comes to the items that I heard tonight, how do we best coordinate? And this is not all in the city, right? There's limited budgets, there's limited opportunity, and there's social service agencies that are closer to the need, that are better aware. And so, how do we coordinate with the pieces that we have? So, those are the next three things that I'm going to do this week and next week in order to try to be a better informed councilman on the subject at hand, and go from there with that of you.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Mr. Labus?
I just wanted to thank everyone for coming in this evening. It's been informational and educational for me to hear each of your perspectives and how this homeless issue, how you've dealt with it, and how you've worked with it, and how it touches each of your lives individually. And so, I thank you for that. Obviously, this is by no means a small issue, or an easy fix. But I think that at least having this forum by which, as Pastor Perry had said, there were different people, that you didn't know other areas existed, other ministries, other groups existed, that we're able to come together and see kind of a bigger picture as far as how we might be able to attack this issue. So, I appreciate all of your commitment and your compassion for the homeless in our town, and that I will...
Thank you, Russell Lewis. Mr. Ley?
Yeah. I would like to thank everybody that came and spoke tonight. I mentioned a few people, and I apologize to the folks I don't mention by name, but Daniel, it was really impactful listening to your personal story, and I know that was really hard for you to come up and share that in front of everybody, and I appreciate you sharing that. Really, it was impactful for me personally. Pastor Perry and your wife, Mrs. Perry, appreciated your comments, and I thought, Mark kind of already touched on it, but I think coming together and forming a network where we have people talking, to be able to coordinate that, the care that folks need, is vital. And it's a common issue, and a theme I've kind of seen, you know, Mark and I, and I think Mr. Rath as well, had gone to transportation meetings last year to talk about our transportation issues. It's the same, it was a lot of the same, where we've got all these fragmented resources that aren't really coordinated together. And I think we're starting to have some of those conversations, but I think we certainly have a long way to go. I did want to speak to, you know, I said I'd be surprised if we had bulldozed on the railroad property two weeks ago, and I was surprised. We did, from what I've heard. And it was a little bit of an education for me. I understand we do have a trespass enforcement standing order from the railroad to enforce trespass laws on their property. And my understanding was that that's essentially what happened after one of the gentlemen was picked up for an assault. And I haven't seen anything that has articulated me or shown me that the police did anything that they weren't supposed to do, given the circumstances they were presented with. And having ridden along with the police department and the fire department, gone down to see the homeless outreach, and what you guys have done, it's not an easy issue, and I think the police have a very hard job. And so, I'm certainly sensitive to, when we're raising questions, and we can split hairs about whether it's an accusation or question, however you want to characterize it, I think anytime we're questioning what the police are doing, we should do so, you know, with all the evidence and really understanding what's going on. And I think, I still want to know what's going on. I haven't been presented with all the facts yet, so I'll reserve judgment there. If our police were doing something they weren't supposed to do, then, hey, let's fix it. The one thing I did learn that they should have done that they didn't do was take pictures. And I think that, I talked to Safety Director Baum, that in the future, if we're cleaning up a camp, my understanding was that this particular camp, after it was left, there was a lot of trash left behind, and it was, you know, inhumane conditions where we were worried that, hey, if that trash was left there, you know, the wind's gonna blow it, it'll end up on other properties. And so, my understanding is that that happens not terribly frequently, where we've got trash that's abandoned and we clean it up. So, again, I was surprised, got educated a little bit, and I'll certainly spend more time trying to make sure I understand what's going on. I do want to mention Resolution 1917. I was really pleased to see that that passed tonight to start funding our new fire station. I think that's critical in the fifth ward, to get a fire station there to improve our response times. I'd also like to mention, Big Brothers and Big Sisters had a great bowling event this past weekend. It was really great to be able to support their organization. I know they raised a good deal of money. And I thank the mayor for his accounting work, counting the beans like he does every year. And that'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Ley. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I need to call a finance committee meeting. I, too, want to thank everyone who spoke this evening and showed up in support. What I really saw is really exciting, and what excited me about tonight was the fact that so often, we have folks come in that just talk about problems, and they don't talk about the solutions. But what I heard tonight were a lot of solutions, a lot of things that can be done and should be done as far as working together and collaborations. And I'm optimistic that things are gonna get better because of just what I heard tonight from all the different entities and individuals in here. So, that was very good. But what I heard tonight were a lot of solutions, a lot of things that can be done and should be done as far as working together and collaborations. And I'm optimistic that things are going to get better because of just what I heard tonight from all the different entities and individuals in here. So, that was very good. I think that you'll find that this council is compassionate and does want to help. I don't think there's anybody up here that does not care about every single citizen in the city of Newark, whether you're there homeless or not. So, I think that you're going to find that the future is bright and that we're going to get better at this. I'm not saying that we're going to solve every problem, but I am going to say that I'm optimistic that things will get better. And I appreciate all of you for helping in that and making that happen. So. Also, at this time, I would like to invoke Rule 21 and reconsider ordinance 18-42. Let me motion to do that.
Mr. Marmy, would you-- can you state that again, please?
I need to make a motion to reconsider ordinance 18-42, invoke Rule 21.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Marmy to invoke, sorry, Rule 21, and it is ordinance 18-42.
Second.
A second on the floor by Frazier. And that is non-debatable, correct?
No, it can be debatable.
Okay. So, I have a motion on the floor by Marmy, a second by Frazier. Is there any questions or comments regarding this? Mr. Cost?
I want to make sure I understand something. On this reconsideration, if the vote goes in favor to go with the Planning Commission's suggestion, my understanding is that then that will be a two-family resident situation as opposed to a multi-family situation. First, I'm going to clarify that. And then, secondly, the other question I have is if duplexes are going to be able-- if a duplex is able to be built on that lot, does that mean that other duplexes will be able to be built in the larger area behind it? Will that make that zoning so that there can be more than one duplex built? Or is it just this one duplex on this one lot? Those are my two questions. Thank you.
Okay. I am going to ask, Mr. Rhodes, could you come to the podium? Just for this whole board and the audience, could you, if you could, please clarify two of the questions that Mr. Cost just has regarding the Planning Commission?
Go ahead.
All right. My first question is if, on this reconsideration, if the vote goes that we are going to-- how to word this-- go back to what the Planning Commission has recommended. By voting yes on this, that means it will go back to then being a two-family--
Yes.
--zoning.
Yes.
Not multi-family.
Not multi-family, no. No.
So, the only will be allowed would be a duplex.
Yes.
Mr. President, could I interject for a minute just to clarify something? The motion that's on the table right now is simply to reconsider. It's not to adopt or amend. This is simply a matter of are we going to undo two weeks ago? So, a vote on this motion to reconsider, if you vote yes, all that does is undo what happened two weeks ago and we begin the debate and the vote all over again.
That's fine.
So, I want to make sure we're not combining two questions into one.
That's fine. Okay, I'll ask the questions after we've reconsidered.
Bill, I'll stand here.
There's a motion to reconsider by Marmy, a second by Frazier. Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. Cost?
No.
Mr. Fennell? Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall? Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
No.
And Mr. Boe?
Yes. So, the motion will pass six to two. The motion passes six to. With that being said, do I have a motion to adopt?
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 18-42.
Okay, I have a motion to adopt by Marmy. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Frazier. At this point, Mr. Cost, if you want clarification there on your questions, Mr. Rhodes, up to podium.
Thank you. So, on this lot where we would now allow a duplex on-- that would be one duplex on this lot? Is that correct?
Bill, it's a big lot. I believe more than one duplex would be allowed on that lot.
So, that-- so the area, would there be any limit to that or how would that be? So, there could be multiple duplexes?
Well, I don't want to say that because I haven't applied-- I haven't taken the lot, laid it out to see exactly what they could get because there's parking that would have to go into consideration. Where the Planning Commission's decision came in at on this was, number one, it went to the Temporary Board of Zoning. And it would have been very easy for us to accept an opinion and go back to what was B2 zoning and go back to two-family. We felt that this should be done in the light of day. We felt it should go through the process. It's not something we were required to do. That's why we sent it to council, because it is a change and we felt the neighbors ought to be aware that the property was zoned B2, that the property owner realized that the land they bought was changed when we redid the zoning code. And the property owner wanted it returned to a minimum of B2 zoning or like zoning. They did ask for a little bit more, which would have allowed them to build multi-family. The Planning Commission didn't see it that way. We didn't feel like that property ought to be enriched to multi-family housing, to build big apartment complexes. Although, we did feel that the property owner had a right to go back to two-family housing, which what it was when they bought it. We checked the zoning back-- cleared back to 1980, and they were B2 zoning. So, at that point, we decided to do this publicly. It's not something the property owners really wanted, they just kind of wanted their rights back. But we kind of felt it should be done in the light of day here with council. And so, here we are.
And I totally agree. For full transparency, I've served on the Temporary Board of Zoning Appeals. I totally agree that it should have been done publicly the way you did it. I commend you for that, totally.
Thank you.
I'm just asking, I don't know the size of that lot. I don't know if it's something that could have, you know, several duplexes built on it or-- I'm just kind of wondering what the parameters are other than for that one-- that one lot that we're talking about.
Bill, on that one lot, two-unit housing would be allowed. The zoning code would guide if it would be one, two building-- two-unit, or if it would be two, or if it would be three. That would all have to do with density, parking requirements, and things of that nature. Those are things I've not laid out. I have talked to the property owner. They don't-- do not have any plans to build on it at this time. They just realized it was a piece of property that they had owned for a period of time that it had the zoning changed on it. So, they asked for it to be returned to what it was. Or similar to what it was as that.
I was just curious.
But that doesn't prevent them from selling it or coming for it at a later date with a proposal to build. And that's why we felt we should do this in the public light. Thank you.
See anyone else have any further questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance 18-42 to 18-42A, which would be consistent with what the Planning Commission recommends.
I have a motion to amend ordinance 18-42 to 18-42-A. A motion by Marmy, a second by Rath. Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. Cost?
No.
Mr. Fennell? Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall? Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
No.
Mr. Boe?
Yes. Motion to amend passes by a vote of six to two. Now, I would need a motion to adopt ordinance 18-42A.
Motion to adopt's already on the floor. What's before council for debate now is on 18-42A.
Does anyone else have any further questions or comments on 18-42A? Mr. Cost, go ahead.
I'm sorry. The only thing I would say is that the neighbors of that area, and again, I forget what the number is, 80-- how many centers do you have? Wants their neighborhood to stay single-family. I understand that. That's what I would want in my neighborhood as well, especially if I thought that's what the zoning was when I bought property there. So, I sympathize with what they're-- with what they're willing to do. And I personally think it should stay single-family. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
I agree that everybody wants the perfect situation in their neighborhood, in my neighborhood. It's single-family, but we have multiple houses that have multiple individuals living in there. And it's all because of the zoning and the property owner's rights. And property owner's rights are-- should be held sacred. This individual purchased a property with a certain zoning and it was taken away from him. I think it-- I firmly believe it was taken away inadvertently, that it was just a mistake that was made. And that property owner has the right to have the zoning in which he purchased the property. He's not asking for more, well, he did ask for more, but we're not providing him more than what he had previously. So, I think that it is right and just that he has given the same type or as close as possible zoning that he had when he purchased the property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, I just felt obligated to speak in this, especially with Mike being in the back of the room and your dedication throughout this time of providing petitions, coming to council, providing feedback, coming for the repeat occurrences. And, Betsy, thank you for the dedication that you've had. At the end of the day, I see the Planning Commission as a compromise. From the single-family side to the multi-family side, what is the right thing for Cherry Street, for the property owner, and for the residents there? And so, I am going to support the Planning Commission's decision with-- it is a two-family duplex. We're zoning it for two families, and that seems like the right, most appropriate thing to do. And thank you for talking to your community and getting the feedback and the petitions and going through the process. And Mike, thank you for your attendance as well. It is appreciated.
Anyone else in this matter? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll on 18-42A.
Mr. Cost?
No.
Mr. Fennell? Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall? Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
No.
And Mr. Boe?
Yes. Motion will pass six to two. Turn this back over to Mr. Ellington.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy.
Thank you.
Mr. Rath?
Thank you. I'll start out with Call the Service Committee meeting for April 1st. Thank you. And I wanted to thank everybody else that's here for coming. A lot of people have said a lot of things. I know there's a lot of different organizations here. I will say that we all try to do for the homeless. And we all try to do things to rectify the situation. The city is not completely blind to this. We do invest money into that. I know somebody said earlier today, "Well, we spent money on this, why don't we spend money on the homeless?" Well, we do. And we invest that in a lot of different organizations. There's a lot of organizations in town that couldn't survive if it wasn't for the money that the city gave them. So, we do do a lot of that. But with all the different organizations that are represented here tonight and all the other organizations that I know that aren't here tonight, I think the one thing that was said that I think makes the most sense is that we do need a coordination of efforts. And I definitely agree with that. I think that's sadly needed. I know there's times where I have food that I'd love to donate and I wouldn't even know where to take it. And I don't even know what the regulations are to take it. Do I have to have canned goods? Do I have to have packaged food? Or could I bring cooked foods? Or things like that? I just don't know the answers to that. So, to be able to have a central location to get answers for that and say, "Okay, you want to do this, you need to go here. You want to do this, okay, you need to go there." To have a central organization to be able to coordinate those efforts, I think would be awesome. I don't see Jeff-- Pastor Perry-- oh, yeah, he is still back there. I love the things that you say, brother. You make a lot of sense. And if somebody were to name a committee and nominate you as chair, I would jump on that and support that in a heartbeat.
I'll help you organize a community discussion. I volunteer.
So--
If you have to participate.
If you want to chair that, I would definitely support that.
Right. Does that make sense of the group?
Don't want to have to switch it out.
This is my turn to speak. I appreciate that. I think what you said made a lot of sense. I think you have a good grasp on reality. I think you have the knack and the desire and the heart to do that. So, I would support you wholeheartedly. I don't know, I had a lot of other things that I wanted to say. I don't remember what half of them are because we had the property rights discussion and it just kind of lost my mind. But I did want to support that resolution as well, 18-42. I guess the one thing that comes to mind is if I buy a piece of property and then a few years later, five years later, 10 years later, somebody comes in and says, "Well, I know you bought this piece of property for this use and it was legal when you bought it, but guess what? We changed our minds and you can't use it for that anymore." So, now, you just can't do that. That's just not-- I mean, we got to stand up for property rights. And I understand not wanting to have an apartment complex in your backyard. And that doesn't make sense and that's why we didn't support that. Absolutely. So, but we do have to support property license. And to be honest with you, that's the one issue that got me motivated and interested in City Council. I live in a residential neighborhood and somebody has-- if you take the two houses directly behind my house, combined their property, it's seven acres. And they wanted to tear down the two houses on there and build an apartment complex that has seven acres. And it's surrounded by 50, 60-year-old houses all the way around it. There's no apartments anywhere near it. I rallied the neighborhood and was successful at blocking that. But that was a change. This isn't a change. This is somebody asking to, "Let me do with my property what I wanted to do with it when I bought it," because that's what was supposed to be then. So, that's why I supported that. I guess I'll bring it on up. That's it. I pass.
You have. Thank you, Mr. Rath.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had quite a such a meeting tonight. I first want to speak on Resolution 1917. This was the resolution that we unanimously adopted for the new fire station. Knowing that the administration will be coming back for a future approval for a loan for the construction of the remaining cost of that building, I hope that we still can have a public discussion about the staffing. The permanent budget positions is 79, and I understand that we're going to go for some grant positions, but I hope that we could have some more dialogue related to how we're going to move forward with building a permanent facility and how we're going to permanently staff it. And then the second concern with that resolution is dealing with the equipment. You know, how are we going to spread the apparatuses that are currently at our fire stations to equip this new building? We're building a new building, so hopefully we can have some permanent understanding regarding the staffing and the equipment going into that facility. The second issue I want to bring up is 18-42, which was dealing with the Cherry Street rezoning. Councilman Fennell wasn't here tonight, but many times we've looked to the ward councilman as to how we should decide on some of these zoning issues, and I know he was against this issue. And the 83 people that signed the petition, they also have property rights. And so I appreciate the efforts that were given there to present that information forward. Unfortunately, it didn't go the way the residents wanted, but, you know, I've got to recognize that they have some issues there, too. And then the reason that, you know, majority of everyone's in our audience tonight is related to the homelessness issue in our city. And this isn't an issue that we can be silent on. You know, I think all of you, many of you spoke very, very well tonight, addressing your compassion, addressing your, you know, the organizations that you are all here for. And us sitting up here shouldn't be silent on this. We need to communicate openly, and we need to be transparent about how we're going to move forward. And I particularly, it's a unique situation because we need to get, and I'm not going to offend you, but in many ways, the volunteering and the grassroots efforts that you're doing, we need to connect you with all these social services heads. You know, the Lincoln County Coalition of Housing, the Salvation Army, all these different groups. Because just last week, I was in a meeting organized by the United Way, and I was in a room with all those people, talking about the homelessness issue. And now tonight, here at city council, we have sort of the grassroots groups, the people that are doing day-to-day, week-to-week, working with our brothers and sisters that are dealing with the homelessness issue. And so we need to, I think we can, as government officials, to combine this effort. And so I would, I know there's going to be an upcoming task force meeting that the United Way Deb Dingus is organizing, and she's done a great job, but that piece of what you're doing and what the, sort of the professional staff is doing, is, there's a disconnect there, and we have to connect that, because it is going to take all of us to ultimately get people intake into proper social service agencies, get them into that avenue of care to get them from off the streets and into either mental health services or job programs, whatever they need, whatever that unique situation is. But we need to connect that, and I think that we can, being in that meeting and also being in this meeting tonight, we can be able to do, will be able to do that. The other piece that I think is missing is, and this is, this is personal, too, because, you know, I've seen, Jason, I've seen the work that your group does, and working with the Methodist Church and opening up that warming center that we had, and I've seen some of the tent cities. I've seen a relative under a bridge in our city, you know. It was disheartening. I mean, it was like, I had no idea that he was living under a bridge. Classmates that I graduated from high school with, you know, people that went on to, you know, either they went into service, or they went, you know, to college, whatever else, but I've seen them living on our streets. And this, and I agree with many of the comments, this isn't, this isn't the way it should be. This isn't our Newark. This isn't the way that we represent and take care of our own. And the professional staff, the people that head all these agencies, they do wonderful things, and I don't want to discredit the work that they do, but people are still falling through the cracks, and you folks are trying to pick up the pieces where you can, and many times, like, out of your own pockets. I know Jason spent so much money on coordinating those dinners and all that stuff, and there's got to be a way for us to do better, and for us to come together, and for us to move forward. And we just need to build that bridge to get over that gap. And so I applaud you for having the courage to do what you're doing every day. You know, you are working with people at where it's just a motion roller coaster. You know, I know that, you know, it takes a toll on the work that you're doing mentally and physically, but you do it every day out of the love of your heart. And I know, Mr. Hammond, you talked about Matthew in the Bible, you know, take care of our, you know, take care of the stranger, take care of the prisoner, take care of our poor. That's kind of where my faith is, too, so I appreciate you saying what you said. But folks, let's not give up. We've got a lot of work to do, but we just need to build some bridges, and hopefully you continue to keep coming to these meetings, keep coming to future meetings, and hopefully we can come together and get, we're never going to, I'm going to say this, I don't think we'll ever end homelessness, but I think we can end chronic homelessness. And that's, you know, we have to be specific about what we can do and what we can't do. You know, can we end just every day someone being out on the street? No. But I think there is a way we could get to chronic homelessness, where we can solve that. And so I just, you know, keep the faith, keep things going, and let's work together, and that'll yield.
Thank you, Blake. Mr. Rath?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to thank everyone for coming in this evening, and I appreciate everyone's compassion. I did want to tell the folks here tonight, and maybe some of you are aware, some aren't, either just talk about a need for additional housing in Newark, and I think that effort's always there, and I know something that's in the works. I believe it's about 84 units up near Log Pond. The city has signed on it, they're in support of it, and I think it's going to be time to program that helps folks that somewhat been, you know, maybe been incarcerated, and some that haven't, that are kind of getting back on their feet. So, you know, there's movement here on the city's end. The Housing Coalition does a great job as well. You know, I have a chance to work with them quite a bit, and, you know, it's a need, and they really tried day in, day out. And it's good to see Jason, too. You know, I went to school with you, Jason, I really appreciate your efforts, you know. I know some of you in the crowd, but I really see what you do around Christmas time, I've taken notice of, and you really stepped up and you're doing a good job. So I wanted to point that out, and I appreciate that. And Parry's, thank you for opening your church up. With that, I will pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, this has been a long meeting. I would just like to add my thanks to everyone tonight for coming and sharing your comments and your opinions. I know we all up here certainly appreciate it. I guess I'd just like to add, there's certainly no easy answer to this problem, that's for sure, and I don't, I don't have an answer right now, but maybe this will be a start to, like everyone has talked about up here, to move in the right direction and get some of these groups together, and maybe we can make some progress. So, again, thanks for coming. Our next committee meeting will be April the 1st at 5:45, which is two weeks from tonight.